Okay, we are live. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, July 16, 2020, 5 o'clock special remote edition of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. And if anyone is out there and they're interested in signing in and being a participant here at the remote meeting, you can call 1-646-749-3112. You can enter the access code 944571349. And if you're going to go on by computer, you can go to globalgotomeeting.com and join meeting number 944571349. Okay, so before I begin, I have my remote participation script to begin. So I'm confirming member access first. So as a preliminary matter, my name is Robert Cator. I'm the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals. In an effort to reduce background noise, I'm going to ask that all of you, please mute your phones at this time. No one unmute if you're going to speak. Permit me to confirm that all members are here, and if you are in fact here, a person on the board, please respond affirmatively. When I call your name, please respond. Mike Barron? Thank you, sir. Ms. Chikolo? That's right, we do not have Larry this evening. Okay, Mr. Cussey? Thank you, sir. Ms. Roach?
I'm here.
Okay, so just before we continue with the roll call, there's a little matter of some housekeeping with Ms. Roach. So she has not officially been sworn back in yet. I spoke with the Clerk's office today. It was because it is required still by law to have a signature at the time of signing in. So Megan is going to be here. She's going to listen on in for future meetings, and she'll get with Caleb to sign all the appropriate forms in the next few days. So she's not going to be participating, but she will be listening. So if I can continue on with the roll then, so Mr. Jones? Peter Jones, I didn't hear that. Caitlin Bush? Hello, Ms...is Caitlin there? All right, well, I'll do one last call of Caitlin Bush, please. All right, hearing and seeing that she may join in, if in fact she does, we'll get her up to speed. All right, so as a matter of, again, with the administrative responsibility, so Mr. Jones will be moving up to a full voting member this evening for the absence of Ms. Chikolo. And if Ms. Bush does join the meeting, she'll be moving up to the position for Ms. Roach for the evening. So do I have town officials? Caleb Moody, are you present?
Here.
Okay. So introduction to the remote meeting. Good evening. This open meeting of the Town of Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals for Thursday, July 16, 2020, is now called the order at 5:02 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely. It considers with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public hearings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting law to have all meetings in publicly accessible physical locations. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed to encourage participate remotely. The order, to which it is mine, posted in the agenda materials for this meeting on the Town's website, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, that the public can follow on with deliberation to the meeting. For this meeting, the Zoning Board of Appeals was convened by remote dispassion for the public only. Although some staff may be physically located in a select meeting in the room in the Town Hall, those employees are passing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join in the meeting remotely, which I already read out before, but I will do so again, call 1-646-749-3112 and enter access code 944571349. Or you can also join by computer via gottomeeting.com, join 944571349. Remote access information has been posted on the Town's website, also identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you. And please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you may broadcast may be captured in the meeting. Meeting materials, all supporting meeting materials have been provided to the members of the body and available at the Town's website. The public is encouraged to follow on using the posted agenda. Meeting business ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda, but before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and fair conduct about business to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Robert Cator, will introduce the speaker for the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you, and then state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, stating carefully to identify yourself first. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford the public comment as follows. The Chair will ask first if there are any members of the public who wish to speak and identify their names and addresses. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on by each name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken on this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote, and if there are any technical difficulties, the Chair will suspend the meeting, will attempt to make resolutions are made, and then we'll keep accurate minutes noting any disconnections and reconnections for the membership. Okay, so with all that being said, do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Through the Chair. Through the Chair. You may want to just go through the roll call one more time for members, just see who...we have a couple more callers that joined in.
Oh, good, okay. That sounds great. Thank you. I appreciate that. So Mr. Cussey, are you still present?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Roach, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm with us.
Vice Chairman, here. Mr. Jones? I didn't hear from Mr. Jones yet. All right, I'll move on to Caitlin Bush. Did she join?
I'm here.
Oh, excellent. Okay, so Caitlin, I'm not sure if you're aware, but so I just read all of the requirements for the meeting to get us up to speed. The standard script that I've been reading is that we be doing the remote meetings, and that you are going to be moved up to a full voting member because Ms. Roach has not been re-s sworn with an accompanying signature yet. So therefore, just to err on the side of caution, we're going to have her step aside tonight. She's going to listen in, and you are going to participate in that hearing.
I'm in.
Excellent. Okay, so I'm sorry, one more time, Mr. Jones? All right, so I think I'll defer, we can refer to Mr. Jones. We'll get him back online, hopefully. So let's go ahead. Do I have a motion to open the 5 o'clock hearing?
I'm Michael Mann, the Right Chair. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing, the 5 o'clock applicant, Daniel Campbell, as stated.
I will read that out in a second. Do I have a second to open the hearing?
Yeah, Rich Cussey, second.
Thank you. Okay, so Daniel Campbell requesting a special permit under section 3.2.2.10 of the Auburn zoning bylaw for an accessory apartment improperly located at 75 Prospect Street, Auburn, Mass. Mass. 67, Porchel 7. And just for the record, this is a continuation from 423, 521, and 618, 2020 meetings. Mr. Campbell, are you present, sir?
I am, yes.
Okay, so I'd like to yield the floor to you. If you have any comments or questions for the members, please remember to go over to the Chair, and if you want to kind of get us up to speed on where you are with your project.
Yep, so from the last meeting, it seemed like, you know, no one was really happy with the length of the breezeway in particular, so I redesigned it and I basically brought it as the shortest I can possibly make it between the connection of my deck and the existing garage, which gets it down to right about 12, between 12 and 13 feet, depending on, you know, the final construction per se, but right in that area. And I submitted a new rendering, so, you know, and it starts to look, it just looks like it's going to be one single door there, and then obviously it looks much small, much smaller, not so big and gawky looking. And hopefully that will, you know, will suffice for everyone. Hopefully everyone liked that design from the last one.
Well, I will, do you have anything else to add? I'll open it up to members of the board.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So I just said, do you have anything else to add, or would you like me to open it up to members of the board?
Um, the only other thing I'd like to add, I know, actually, I know there was concern last time about like what I would be doing with the extra space above and whether or not I was, you know, going to keep the 700 square foot mark. You know, obviously, I'm definitely going to keep the apartment to the 700 square feet that I'm allowed. I know that this is, I believe this is a special permit that I technically am applying for, so if there's a way to put a stipulation or something onto the permit that says that I'm, you know, subject to a yearly spot inspection, you know, without advance notice or anything like that, I mean, I'm more than willing to do something like that to ease everyone's mind, so that everyone knows that I won't be adding to it, and, you know, whether it's called in the building department or whoever would, you know, do their spot inspection, I'm more than happy to do something like that to make sure everyone understands that I'm going through by all these, you know, all the laws for the accessory apartment. Other than that, I think that's all I have for right now.
Excellent, okay. I do appreciate that, but I don't think we've ever taken unusual steps to authorize entries into private dwellings for the purpose of making sure your closet's clean, so I don't think we'll be doing that. But anyway, I want to hand it over to Mr. Mann, sir. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Ms. Campbell, I've got the rendering in front of me that's been updated. So I know that you've mentioned approximate. Do you have exact measurements of what the length of this is going to be?
Well, from the corner of my existing garage to the corner of the new one, where I would start, the corner of the foundation, is about 12 feet four and a half inches. So, I mean, obviously, I'm assuming there will be no issues with the digging of the foundation and things like that. So that's, you know, that's the length from corner to corner as it sits right now. And with my property line on the other side and the setback that I have, I actually have to be, you know, without being able to put the garage further back and bringing the garage closer towards the front of the property to line up with that dent, I actually can't stretch it any further than that because, based on what I measured out, I would be within two feet four inches of that 10-foot setback. So the far side of the garage would be sitting 12 feet four inches from the property line, which gives me the two and a half, or two foot four inch buffer zone for the setback. So I have no choice but to keep it to that 12 foot, 12 foot four inch, six inch length of the breezeway. If I try to stretch it any further, I'd be encroaching on the setback line.
And in prior rendering that we went through, it showed the existence of a deck. So from the rendering that we're seeing now, I might have assumed that your current deck is going to be completely, completely removed.
Uh, no, the current, this is going to attach, basically attach at the corner of the current deck. The deck kind of comes along the back of my existing garage and then extends out towards my driveway. So this, the new garage, I was going to sit right at the corner where the deck ends, which is the 12-foot mark from corner of the new garage to the corner of the old garage, the existing garage, where I would be tying in the breezeway.
So where I'm going is, while I appreciate the new rendering and the shortening of the breezeway structure, I'm still not seeing a final design that incorporates what's going to happen with your deck.
Well, I'll just be building the breezeway into the deck. So like I'll have to remove probably, you know, a corner of the deck, you know, I'll have to remove some boards of the deck, and kind of, you know, the section of the deck will become the breezeway. So basically, the breezeway will be going in place of a section of the deck, but not be removing the entire deck.
And I appreciate that. I think that what I, what I would have liked to seen is that the changes in that deck incorporated in your rendering, because we're not seeing in your rendering what your project is going to look like. But I'm going to reserve any additional questions, Mr. Chairman, unless the applicant would like to respond. I'm going to reserve any additional questions to further in the hearing.
So I'd like to do a point of clarification here before we continue. So first of all, Mr. Jones, are you with us?
I am now, yes. I was having some connectivity issues.
Okay, well, you're logged in there now, so just to get you up to speed on everything here, we're still in the first hearing. We're discussing Mr. Campbell's ongoing breezeway design. We haven't really gone further beyond the applicant's presentation, and you can see that on the screen in front of you, there is a new rendering of the updated design. So before I go any further, I want to kind of do a point of clarification between the applicant and I think Mr. Mann, and probably the whole board. So I think when the applicant is trying to say is that when he's got 12 feet of breezeway, I think what he's trying to say is based on how it gets dug and who sets the foundation, it might go six inches either way. And I think that's kind of normal when it comes to construction of this size and grading of the property. And I also think that he's been clear in fact through his explanation is that he has no intention of encroaching upon the 10-foot setback on the other side. I think that might have been the applicant being almost too accurate. Like, we don't need to know that it's 12 feet four and four and three quarter inches, because it might barely six inches either way based on how they set the forms. So let's be clear, I think he's made all of the setback requirements. Mr. Mann has a concern to make sure that the existing deck is either going to be absorbed into the new design that will be completely incorporated into the breezeway that will remain fully covered from dwelling to dwelling. So can we get those items cleared up between now and before we move forward? That's what I'm looking for. So I'll go back to Mr. Campbell, if you understand what I'm saying. Can you kind of represent for me there?
Yes, so obviously, I can't build a breeze, I'm not going to build a breeze directly on top of the existing deckboard, because I'll need to build it, you know, correctly for structural, but for, just to try to get the picture in your head, if you were to look from the existing corner of my garage now to the corner of the new garage, the deck is in between those two. Essentially, I'll be building the breezeway right on top of the deck to be able to connect it to. I will, you know, but I will rework the decking boards below and rework the joists and the structure, everything that I have to do to get it to be code. I'll rework all that appropriately, so that the deck is basically built into the side of the breezeway, and the deck will kind of mold around the breezeway.
Right. And again, I go back to asking for clarification on this to make sure the board understand, these are all things that we can require as part of this permit, because I'm not interested in how far his, you know, deck is. Code takes care of that. Caleb takes care of that, or his representative does, at a site inspection and when the plan gets admitted. So I think as long as we make these requirements, if everybody is happy with the size of the breezeway, we should defer the connectivity issue and the type of materials used to the Department of Inspection Services rather than spending time dwelling on it here in the meeting, because that's not what we're here for. We're here to make sure that this design makes everyone happy, everything has met the requirements of the special permit being requested, and then we can defer, again, as I said, plans to Caleb. So that is all I want to be clear before we move forward with everyone. Okay, so with that being said, Mr. Campbell, can you go ahead and present what I, again, clarify what I was just trying to explain?
Clarify again what you, about the breezeway?
Well, I'm not trying to put warden in anyone's mouth, and I'm certainly not trying to, you know, answer the questions for you. What I am trying to explain to you is that I don't need to know about you tearing up the deckboards. What I need to know is that you're going to make sure that breezeway is incorporated from dwelling to dwelling, fully covered, as Mr. Mann had reflected in fact.
Oh, absolutely. The breezeway will be covered, structure to structure, tied into the roofline, shingles, blended together, gutters blended together, and blended right into the existing deck that's there now.
Excellent, thank you. So I'm going to go back to Mr. Mann for a minute. Mr. Mann, and I apologize for trying to bridge the gap between, sir, that certainly, I just feel like there was some kind of a miscommunication or misunderstanding. Does that help at all?
So, Mr. Chairman, the gap is that I'm not seeing a final plan. And I well understand that we can condition what the applicant needs to meet for the project, but I'm not seeing how that ties into the deck. I've heard explanation, and I understand intent, but I'm not seeing what that looks like. And what we're here to do is to assess that. So I am comfortable with, you know, the fact that the breezeway has been shortened, and in earnest, the applicant's made attempts to explain exactly what it is going to look like, but I'm just saying point of fact that we're not seeing what it's going to look like as far as tied into the house from the deck and what that renders. This is a picture of something different, because it doesn't incorporate the deck. Now, I'm not too satisfied with it, but I'm just saying that that's the gap. And if we condition what it needs to do to tie into the house with the deck, then I'm satisfied with that, because again, Inspection Services will take care of what needs to happen there. But the point made is that we're not seeing what's going to happen with the connection and what's going to happen with the existing deck.
So you want, so I think, okay, so again, try to bridge this gap here. So I think what we have come to the conclusion maybe with the applicant here then, is that are we A, satisfied with the current design as submitted, and do you want to require them to come back one more time next month with a formal set of plans now that we agreed to this particular design as it is submitted? Do you know what I'm saying?
If that's a question to me, Mr. Chairman, what I would defer is that I'll defer any further questions, and let's go ahead and ask other board members to jump in, see if there are any further questions, and we can move forward before we determine outcome of what we'd ask the applicant to do.
Okay, that sounds good. I appreciate that point of water. Thank you, sir. So I'll move on to Mr. Cussey. Do you have any comments or questions for the applicant, sir?
Yeah, I have one. Are you planning on heating this addition? Breezeway?
Uh, the breeze, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on heating it. I mean, I was probably going to insulate it just so that it would, wouldn't get, you know, frost and things inside. I mean, but I could heat it with a piece of electric baseboard heat or something. I'm not opposed to it. You know, if that's a condition that I need to do, then I have absolutely no problem doing that.
Okay. All right, that's my question. All right, so I'm going to move on to Mr. Jones.
Um, I have one question. The interior of the garage, do you know what the square footage is?
The garage, the actual garage space?
Yes, the first floor?
Or the, the first floor garage space? It would, yeah, the first floor garage space would be, so the overall space would be 1,500 square feet, the 40 by 40. I probably will have a wall up in the center if somewhere just to kind of break up, you know, like, you know, maybe some storage space on one side and then the other side where I park vehicles or whatnot.
And the living area inside the house is 1,800 and 6, right?
Uh, yes.
Okay. The reason why I ask is just, I think it's section, subsection F, the 20% rule. So between the, you know, with the breezeway, the existing house and the garage, it looks like you'll have in excess of 3,500 square feet, so that 700 square foot wouldn't be an issue. That's my question.
Would be an issue?
No, I'm saying because you have 3,500 or more square feet, there is no issue. You've addressed my issue. I don't have a concern now.
Okay, great, thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I don't have any questions.
All right. Do I have any butters present that made a big difference in speaking on the matter? All right, butters again, I'll do a five, four, three, two, one. So apparently we have no butters present. So again, I'll go back to Mr. Mann, sir. I think not me first, but everyone, where would you like to move forward with this? I think is up to you here.
Well, that's a lot of pressure, Mr. Chairman. But, so, look, succinctly, I think that the design that the applicant has returned with is palatable, at least I'll just speak for me. My, I want to raise a final point. So Caleb was articulate to point out at last meeting that we don't have a required length for a definition of a breezeway. And so here's something for consideration for the board. What we're looking at is a rendering that's promised 12, give or take, 12, give or take feet based on this, with a promise on record that it's going to tie in appropriately to the existing deck. Without dimensions, for me, on that breezeway, because it's certainly not something that I would consider in our authority appropriate to condition the length of the breezeway, without dimensions of what we're approving, it leaves it open. Now, I'm not suggesting that the applicant will come in and return during construction to the full length that we had initially seen, but it's something that the board should, in my view, consider, and the fact that with the conditions, we're looking at a plan without dimensions that doesn't nail down what that length is going to be. And it's not something we would condition. And so I would, I'll answer you directly, Bob. I mean, I'm comfortable with the design. I'm comfortable with the 12 to 13 foot span and conditioning that the deck is essentially tied in correctly and will let Inspection Services take that on. But I'm still uneasy about the fact that we can't condition that length, and the original length it was proposed does certainly not fit into the characterization of that neighborhood. And so, so that's where I would stand, and I think that that's something that is a bit of a risk, just based on the fact that we're not looking at a dimensional proposal.
So I appreciate your concern, absolutely 100%, that we can't condition all these things, and I don't see why we can't condition it, that it meets the agreement for the missed meeting to be no more than, let's say, 14 feet, that would give them two feet of leeway with the design. You know, and with the other, the reason I chose that two feet is because the other two feet on the backside will mean he still want to interfere with the setback.
So I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, so I don't disagree. I would, I would ask that we, just for that topic, pull in Caleb and see if it would be appropriate to condition the length of that breezeway.
Okay, so I think, I agree with you here, but can I just maybe take this at a different tack for one second? Is that, let me maybe suggest this, is that if, if the board is happy with the scenario that's presented in front now, and we can all agree that we can move forward safely with getting design plans that would be approved by the Department of Inspection Services to present at next month's meeting, I mean, that way we all get a chance to look at it and see, and then they can finally move forward from there.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the board. I believe there are two ways to look at this. One is to look at the accessory apartment as a carve-out of the attached garage, and another way to look at it is to look at the entire addition as part of the accessory apartment decision. And I think if we just look at the accessory apartment as a carve-out of this garage that he's attaching to his home, it's a much simpler issue than if we look at the entire addition as the accessory apartment, because this, the entire addition, it doesn't just incorporate the accessory apartment, it also incorporates this significant garage. So I'm, for me, it's an open question as to which of the two ways we should be looking at this.
I mean, just from my point of view, is we stick to what was requested here on the 32210, the Auburn Zoning for an accessory apartment? 32210, the oven zone for an accessory apartment? Because he's not stepping on any footprint in the property that would prevent him from putting a breezeway in the garage up regardless. It's the accessory use apartment that we're looking at that requires a special permit. If it was just the garage and just the breezeway, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So, that's my take on it. So, that's what he's... He wants to have a 700 square foot apartment through that project is really what it comes down to. So...
Chairman, if I may.
If the board... So, what we've been doing for the last three months is narrowing down the design so it would not degrade the intent and purposes of the bylaws that we have to abide by, but also that it would fit the neighborhood. So, we've worked it down to this plan with, you know, a lot of effort on both sides. So, what I'm asking is if the board would like to see finished, completed, construction style plans, then are we satisfied with this particular layout as shown so the applicant can comfortably move forward and invest that money? I think what his concern is to have final plans to walk in the door and say, "This is what I'm doing." So, I think that's where we are at. So, do we agree that this plan is acceptable and all this presentation is, he comes back with plans? Or do we allow him to present plans to the Department of Inspection Services and list them as conditions? So, that's really, in my opinion, where we are at on this project. And if I'm wrong, and I'm gonna go right around to make sure because generally speaking, I know that I usually am, I'm gonna go back to the top again and we'll start with Mr. Maron. Your thoughts on where we are at this point?
Mr. Chairman, you truly need to exercise giving yourself a lot more credit than that. You are more correct than you are ever wrong. And I think what you articulated in summary is correct in my view. Before I answer your question directly, Mr. Jones raises an interesting point. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, through you, if I could direct the question directly to Mr. Jones.
I might need to break it. I'm sure somebody else needs to break the guarantee.
And I promise for the board, I'll be great. Mr. Jones, so are you suggesting that based on size and square footage still for the garage, that the size of the accessory apartment would no longer matter? I'm just trying to understand your point.
Yeah, so the phrase "living area" is open to the interpretation of the board. By incorporating square footage of that garage into the total living area, you know, we then can find that this 700 square foot accessory apartment is non-greater than 20% of the existing living area.
Sure. Okay, so through the chair, Mr. Jones, so in that view, and I don't disagree with your math, but in that view, what we would then be asking the applicant to do is to not put an apartment in there, but put a living space. And I think their lives are different because what's been requested, and this is where I would seek clarification, but what's been requested is succinctly an accessory apartment with all the things that an apartment would afford. If... I think it's an interesting point that you raised, but I don't believe it's the intent of the applicant to just increase living space. I believe it's a separate, inclusive, and accessory apartment. And for that view, they would be held to the square footage.
I respectfully, I would disagree. I'm not sure his intent should be relevant. I'm not certain of that, but I'm 51% sure that intent shouldn't factor in.
So, what you're saying is then, based on what you're calculating, you're saying is, so right now we have a 700 square foot minimum, and you're saying he can run the 750?
No, I'm saying that he can... He's capped at 700 regardless, but there's another section that says the accessory apartment cannot expand the living space by more than 20%.
Oh, right.
So, he would need a minimum of 3,500 in existing living space before he were to convert what I'm calling the unfinished second floor area of the garage into an accessory apartment.
I see. Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I see what you mean. No, so, yeah, we have all those requirements. Again, I think I go with Mr. Maron is that the idea of having the accessory use apartment is like Mr. Maron mentioned, is, you know, in a four toilet bathroom, it's four liter kitchen, or a kitchen or some sort. So, even though it is attached to the breezeway, it remains independent in terms of function from the actual house. Rather than just having a bathroom, let's say, with nothing in it and just, you know, a big box.
Mr. Chairman, so for me, the applicant supplies for an accessory apartment. It would come under the guise of accessory apartment. His intent is clearly to add an accessory apartment. So, with this space, I'll go back to your original question. The design for me is fine. The length of the breezeway has been truncated. On the midlife estate, um, plan submitted, and I think this would be enough for me as far as the dimension of plan submitted, and that would be enough for me to condition. I don't know who could pay with this form. I don't know that we would have an ability to condition the size of the breezeway based on the bylaws. But given that what the applicant's presented this evening and what he's gone on record with, I'd certainly be comfortable moving forward with that.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cuddy, you have thoughts?
Yeah, I'd be okay moving forward with the conditions.
Okay. Mr. Jones, your thoughts, given all this information we've just digested?
Uh, do know.
Okay. And Ms. Bush?
I am in the same. I agree.
Okay, so I feel as though the board is in favor of moving forward provided we make conditions, and I'm gonna defer to Caleb at this point. Caleb, so as you heard the conversation, the board has some questions in terms of what it can and cannot do in terms of the length of the breezeway because there is no existing bylaw. Can we choose to require a particular length on that?
Through the chair, I would advise against the board conditioning the length of the breezeway.
Okay, so then what we... I think the other question is then, if the board moves... The board can move forward either way. It could do it with having to see the plans in the next meeting or having you review the plans that are approved based on what you've seen here this evening. Is there... Do you have a personal or do you have an office level preference, I would say, I guess?
I do not. That would be up to the board's discretion.
Okay. And truthfully, to remind the board, we've done both in the past. So, and I think Mr. Maron's concern is that because we cannot condition the length of the breezeway, we would invite not to... We should probably ask to come back next month with a solid set of plans now that we are all in agreement with the design. Mr. Campbell, back to you, sir, before I close the public portion of the hearing. Is that something that you... You get over all that now? I think that's just what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I absolutely understand. I would... I'm hoping that I don't have to come back again with plans just to, you know, to delay me another month. If I have to, I'm more than willing to for sure. I'm just really hoping I don't. Like I said, with the setbacks and everything, there's... I can't make the breezeway any longer than the 12 feet-ish, 14 at the absolute max because if I went over that, I'm gonna be over my 10-foot setback. And obviously, the building department won't approve my plans anyways. But again, if everyone needs me to come back with a set of plans, then at this point, I'll do whatever I need to do to move forward. Like, I've gotten a lot of help tonight. I appreciate your patience, everybody's patience up to this point. So, if you need plans to come back, I will. I'm just really hoping I don't.
Sure, no, I totally understand that. So, honestly, Mr. Maron, just a conversation here. Honestly, I think we have a substantial amount of documentation in terms of video evidence, minutes of the meeting, obviously, we can replay all of this, and with the applicant's intent, although we cannot condition the length of the breezeway, I think we have enough documented evidence to show that the intent of the applicant is to stay with what the conversation we had with this evening. And should the commissioner approve the plan, the project can move forward. That is just of my thought at the time. To you, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, again, I'll be succinct. I will defer to the will of the board. I, for one, would prefer to see plans. I understand that we've got documentation, but I prefer to see a dimensional plan.
All right. So, I appreciate that. I'm gonna, you know, we've discussed this long enough and we have other people waiting, and I think we've, you know, I think we have a general consensus of where the board is with this. So, I'm gonna ask for, if there is no further comments or questions or concerns, is there a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, a motion to close the public portion?
I have two motions, one from Mr. Maron and one from Mr. Jones. Do I have a second?
I'll second Mr. Jones' motion.
All right, so to be clear, Mr. Jones first, Mr. Maron second. Mr. Cuddy, you have voted to close the public hearing?
Yeah, go ahead and close.
Thank you. Mr. Jones already said yes. Ms. Bush?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, and I vote to close, okay. So, um, do I have a motion for the 5:00 PM applicant requesting a special permit number 32210 as we have been discussing? And just to be clear, I just want to make sure that you're clear that if you make a motion right now in either direction, we can make sure that the conditions on either direction are clear. So, if you're making the motion, don't feel like you have to include all the conditions in one shot here, is that's what I'm saying? So, go ahead. All right, so do I have a motion for the 5:00 PM applicant either way?
I'll move to leave it to Mr. Rudy rather than ask the applicant to come back.
Okay, um, so that's not really what I'm asking. What I'm asking is I need a motion to either approve or deny the application as it's presented, and then we can list the conditions that we have authorized to list based on the bylaws that we have in front of us. So, is there a member that wants to either begin the process of approving or denying the 5:00 PM application by motion?
Move to approve.
All right, so I have a motion to approve, and we will list conditions after. Do I have a second on Mr. Jones' motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second with the following conditions, standard conditions, of course, but I'd like to see a dimensional, an exact dimensional, essentially, an exact dimensional set of plans submitted that both incorporate size and scope of the breezeway as well as how it ties into the house of deck.
Okay, so, but we just talked about we can't... We can't limit the size and scope of the breezeway. If you remember, we don't have a bylaw on that. That would be just clarified. So, just so I understand, what are you looking for in the condition for the breezeway?
Exact dimensional plan.
Okay, so that actually has a limit. It just specifically states and requests that. Okay, that's excellent. Thank you. I appreciate that. I'm gonna be cautious wording, sir.
Well, thank you.
I have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Mr. Cuddy, you have a vote, sir?
I approve.
All right, Ms. Bush?
I approve.
All right, and the chairman, the chair, I approve. So, again, to be clear, for Mr. Campbell's sake, you need to submit, obviously, your hard plans now for approval. We're gonna defer the approval to the building commissioner, and then you'll be able to move forward with the project from there.
Okay, that's great. I greatly appreciate everything.
All right, good luck and I hope it all works out. Sorry for the delay, but I think we've all come down to a plan that will be workable for everyone.
Yeah, no, the delay was fine. I mean, like I said, I appreciate everybody working with me. I appreciate everybody's patience up to this point and allowing me to continue to come back, you know, multiple times. It's appreciated and I hope everybody has a great weekend.
All right, good luck. Thank you, you too. All right, so we're gonna move right on here because we have a few things still with the... On the docket, we have a 505 application. Eastland Partners Incorporated requesting a comprehensive permit under Master and Lodge Apple 40B for the workforce housing apartments on property located at 109 Tinkin Hill Road, Auburn, Mass., map 59, parcel eight and 26, Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., map 65, parcel 71. For the record, we got a continuation from 521 and 618, 2020 respectively. Is the applicant present?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. This is Clay Williams with Eastland Partners, and I have Steve O'Connell with Turning Point Engineering.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to open the 505 PM hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, open the hearing.
Thank you. So, I have a motion to open, Mr. Maron. Do I have a second?
Second?
No. Second? Mr. Cuddy, you have a second? So, all a favor? Aye, we don't really worry about that too much. So, I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Eastland Partners. Do you want to bring us up to speed and then we can move forward from there?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, my name is Steve O'Connell from Turning Point Engineering on behalf of Eastland Partners. So, just maybe a quick summary for everyone's benefit. This is our third public hearing on this application. VHB is currently reviewing the supplemental traffic study that was provided to them. We internally are finalizing revised engineering plans based on VHB's review comments and comments we received from various department heads, specifically the fire department. The revised plans will be very detailed, addressing all of VHB's comments and all of the input we've received throughout this process. We are on track to submit those plans to VHB within two weeks, which will give them three-plus weeks of time to perform a follow-up review before the next DVA meeting scheduled, I believe, for August 20th. So, with the absence of any further review comments to discuss this evening, we thought it would be beneficial to solicit some input from individual members if they were willing and happy to provide information. As you can see on the screen, we've shared some renderings that we have prepared of the project, of what the buildings will look like, depending on the landscape. And depending on the outcome of the discussions this evening, I'd like to, you know, wrap up discussions at the end, kind of with a summary of maybe where we stand and what the expectations are moving forward. With that being said, I, you know, perhaps it would be appropriate just to get into some questions from a member's standpoint, if there's any public available as well at your discretion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, I did want to go on record and say that also we received a letter dated... Oh, actually, she did not date it, I apologize. But anyway, from Ms. Irene Lassard with some concerns. Each member of the board has received a copy of that, so at some point, we may go over and ask some questions about that. But I know traditionally, the board likes to not have any influence in terms of these areas when we open it up to the members of the public. So, are there any butters present at the meeting this evening that would like to speak through the chair and ask questions of the applicant? If so, could you please, one at a time? Do we have a rest case? Maybe we don't...
Can't hear what's going on.
Yeah, I'm working on it right now. Hey, if somebody wants to feedback in the background, can we stop popping? There we go. All right, so whatever CC is, is having some feedback issues. So, I have the initials MRN in my screen below me. Is that person present? Did you introduce... Are you part of the meeting? Would you like to have a comment? Public comment? All right. Is there anyone else that has a public comment or question for the applicant?
Did you hear Irene? Hello?
Do you have something to keep back on in the background? Your phone is on, your volume, or a TV in the background or something?
Let's try this. Is that better?
That is much better, thank you.
Okay, I was trying to see what you were talking about on the TV channel, and I can't see what you're referring to. So, this is Irene at 11 Laker Street, and I'm in a butter... in a butter and I'm the one who sends the letter. And I can't believe I didn't date it, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Yeah, just have very grave concerns about the small part of Albert Street that is not new, as far as being able to accommodate traffic that's going to be on that road and given that there'll be buses now on there that were not there before.
So you're concerned about the width of Albert Street beyond the length of the construction site?
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, I'm gonna defer over to the applicant as they can address that, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, i- if he helps to know what specific concerns, uh, Mrs. Lassard has, uh, that, that portion of Albert Street that connects Laker Street to Route twenty, uh, you know, has had some improvements, but there are additional improvements that are still pending, uh, once National Grid, you know, completes their work, which is in the very near future. Uh, final improvements, including sidewalk, uh, will be made and some minor realignment adjustments. Um, our traffic analysis, which is under review by VHB, talks about aspects of that portion of Laker Street and all indications are that it, it will actually function, uh, rather well. Um, so if there are some specific concerns other than what I've just mentioned, we'd be happy to address them.
So according to our letter, the Housing Regulation database, and, uh, we can provide you with a copy of this, we certainly will, um, the minimum road type for these typical roads, so she has listed the secondary streets, uh, from twenty-four up to thirty feet, a major street is considered forty, and subdivision road is considered a major street. Is that, are those forty feet wide, I guess is what she's asking. What are the width of those streets?
Uh, the Albert, the portion of Albert Street between Route twenty and Laker Street is, uh, minimum of twenty-four, uh, portions of it are forty, up to forty feet wide as you get closer to Route twenty, Southford Street.
Okay. Um, yes, ma'am, I was gonna defer back to you, Ms. Lassard.
I'm just concerned about the bottleneck, the bottleneck portion where it's only twenty-four feet wide because if there's a bus, they said the buses can be wag, uh, flagged down. And currently, two cars cannot go by there in the winter now, never mind putting a bus there. So the only street that's going to be leading to that subdivision is Albert Street. You've gotta worry about that bottleneck. Twenty-four feet's not gonna be wide enough.
Alright, if you would mind, uh, hanging on one second, ma'am. Um, gentlemen, would you like to discuss that again?
Uh, well, we don't expect buses to come down Albert Street. The residents of the project would have the ability to walk out to Route twenty where they could catch a MRTA bus line.
I think this lady, uh, this, this concerned resident is speaking about school blockers, though.
Both type of buses, 'cause buses are twelve feet across and the car is typically five, so that's seventeen feet there. And if you allow any snow buildup, that's gonna be longer, I mean, you're gonna need more than twenty-four feet. And there's no other road that I, I was told last meeting that this was gonna be the only access road, that the only other road out of that subdivision is the gated road and that people would be able to flag a bus if they wanted to stop to pick them up on the way to Route twenty.
Our gentleman, uh, did you hear that?
Yeah, um, you know, my only response is buses travel down, uh, much narrower roads throughout town every day, very safely. Uh, the, the realignment of Albert Street to line up with the project entrance and the widening, and I was mistaken, um, I just checked our records, it actually is wide at twenty-six feet. So from twenty-six feet wide up to forty, as you get closer to Route twenty, uh, I, I sincerely believe that, uh, that width will more than accommodate, uh, all types of buses, school buses and pedestrian buses.
Alright, ma'am.
According to the, yeah, just say, according to what I saw that was voted on by the town in Auburn in two thousand and four, it had to be a minimum of forty feet.
I'm gonna hold right there. Mr. Chairman, do we have any record of that documentation from past meetings or can we access that at some point to verify that?
Through the chair, what are you looking to verify?
Um, so, uh, Ms. Lassard has stated that when this project first came to fruition, it was clear that the, uh, the meetings that they agreed the forty-foot wide roads in the area. I don't recall that, I don't know that, but I'm asking, is that something we can feedback through and look for, if I have somebody do that?
Through the chair, I would just say that the subdivision was approved by the planning board and there's an approved set of plans for that subdivision with upgrades to Laker Street all the way to Route twenty, I believe.
So you said upgraded, but it doesn't specifically mention a forty-foot width, does it?
I would not have that information. It's, like I said, the planning, the planning board approved the subdivision.
Okay.
Previously.
Okay. Um, I, I see. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you. So I have the, uh, the approved subdivision plans here in front of me. I think what might be confusing to, uh, Ms. Lassard is the dimensions on that plan show forty foot, that's the width of the right-of-way of Albert Street, which is different in the width of the traveled way, which would be the pavement width, measured at forty feet. Uh, is it often a misconception of the difference between a right-of-way and the traveled way?
Okay.
Right, is that what you're?
I'm, I'm trying, so we have to make sure that we go through the chair when we have these discussions to keep it in a clear manner for, for, for record keeping. So that's why I usually have to wait and say half your name, half their name, and go back and forth before we talk. So if you could go ahead, Ms. Lassard, I apologize.
No, that's okay, it was my fault. Um, again, Irene Lassard, Eleventh Laker Street, and I thought that a sidewalk on one side was mandated by the definite, definition of the subdivision, major street access, in which case that takes into account the forty feet, correct?
Well, I think what he's talking about when he comes to the forty-foot setback is what the road, okay, I'm gonna defer if I don't wanna answer somebody else's question. So, Eastland, do you?
Uh, so, I think to clarify, Mr. Chairman, uh, the Albert Street, the portion of Albert Street between Laker and Route twenty was, is not a subdivision. The subdivision is on the, the north and the east side of Laker Street, which has thirty feet of pavement and two sidewalks. The improvements to the existing part of, of Albert Street that were approved, were approved as, approved as part of, to widen the street to twenty, at a minimum of twenty-four feet with one sidewalk. Um, and that's, that's the work that, uh, is about to be concluded now that National Grid is finalizing their work. Um, so there's a distinction between a subdivision and then the existing portions of Albert Street.
Sure. Okay. Ms. Lassard, is that clear?
Yeah.
Isn't this, is this, they're allowed to reach kinda technically?
Right, well, again, Irene Lassard, Eleventh Laker Street, and when the original, um, uh, approval was made on the subdivision, it was not going to be just that the only access to that subdivision was going to be Albert Street. And now that's, that's the last meeting, that's what it was indicated as, as the main street.
So I appreciate that, ma'am, and I know it's not, but the burden of proof is not on you, it is on the town, but do you have that documentation? Because you're telling me that these are here and I have two gentlemen, two sets of different people in front of me that don't have that information. Do you have it?
Uh, I can get it, I'm sure.
Okay, but I mean, I, I, without that documented evidence in front of us, I, I can't use that, and neither can anyone else, but we can defend it and try to help clear it up for you, but if we don't have that, we have to defer that. So, um, that what they're saying is they have a forty-foot easement for that road and then a twenty-eight-foot completion with a sidewalk on one side, and I believe that, if I'm not mistaken, gentlemen, was that the agreement?
Yeah, that's part of the approved subdivision plan set.
Right, so that's the original plan, you're right, the design, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, ma'am, I'm gonna move back to you, what did you question? If that was the, they have the original plans, that was the agreement, does that clear it up for you?
Um, I guess it does. I, 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 I would need more research time. I don't have any other questions, given what I have in front of me right now.
Okay, but, so that's, I, I mean, so, we're going back to the original plans, they have the original plans, and the roads that are being developed right now are part of the original plan that was approved by the town.
I'm sorry.
Okay, do you have anything else, ma'am?
No, thank you.
Alright, I'm gonna move on to the next one, because we have a few waiting. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Alright, uh, I'm gonna go one more time around. Any, any other person on the phone called into this meeting, whether they be muted or not, are they interested in speaking on this matter? I do hear somebody sounds like trying to speak in. Alright, uh, hearing none, seeing none, I have, what? Um, alright, last call. Is anybody else trying to speak on behalf of, uh, the residents or any other interests regarding the Eastland Partners, five o'clock PM, a five-oh-five Alright, hearing none, seeing none, five, four, three, two, one. So that's gonna conclude any more comments from, uh, the public. Now I'm gonna move on to Mr. Merron, sir, and defer to the floor to you. Do you have any questions or comments, concerns for the applicant?
I have no questions for this applicant, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Cuddy?
Yeah, I had one question. Uh, you estimated the amount of kids that would be put into the school system out of these three-hundred-plus apartments. Um, I was wondering what that number was.
Uh, thank you. Uh, through the chair, uh, Clay Williams with Eastland Partners. Uh, that was covered in our municipal impact analyses, uh, presented at the last board meeting. Um, if memory serves, I believe that number was, uh, sixty-nine, um, based on a bunch of data from a company called E-Consult Solutions out of Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Cuddy?
No, I'm good.
Alright, um, Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones, do you have any questions, comments, concerns for the applicant?
I have none.
Thank you. Ms. Bush?
I have none.
Okay, thank you. So as you can see, gentlemen, uh, is there anything else you'd like to add? I think we've kind of got ourselves up to speed. Um, do you wanna talk about maybe where the party is at this time or give you a five minutes on file?
Yeah, I, I think if, uh, you know, if that's gonna conclude the discussions, I would, you know, I'd just like to, you know, maybe give our perspective on where things stand. I think, uh, there's been ample opportunity for public comment, which obviously will keep the hearing open, but there's been ample opportunity for public comment. Uh, I think, uh, assuming the technical aspects of the project, uh, are reviewed by VHB and found satisfactory, which is what our expectations are, um, you know, we could, uh, hopefully start to, you know, get towards the end of this process and we could work on some things administratively with, with, uh, Caleb and his staff, uh, as we continue the, continue the hearings, uh, you know, for the next month or two.
Okay. Um, so one more time around, nothing else for the other, um, members of the board, correct? Hearing none, seeing none. Caleb, do you have anything you'd add?
Just through the chair, um, I just wanted to bring up the let, the DPW letter, make sure that everyone on the board's aware of the letter from DPW, the comments.
Okay, please.
Should be in your packets. They were emailed to you yesterday. I believe the applicant has a copy as well.
Yes, we do. Yeah, this is, I have, I have.
Yeah, okay, come here. Hang on.
Mr. Chair, this is Ginger.
Hello?
Hi.
Hello.
They're not in your packets that I delivered Friday because we just received that yesterday. So they were emailed to everybody.
Okay. So, uh, do you have one, Caleb, that you, can you run this read out? Is it something, I mean, or give the, uh, the basic highlights of?
I can bring it up on the screen, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. Well, we have some documentation for it and it's available
So the letter is from DPW. Dear Mr. Tetro, this is in regards to the proposed three-hundred-and-twenty-four unit apartment complex located on Albert Street Extension. A critical component of this in any project is the need for adequate water and sewer service. It is my understanding that this project has been pursuing a public water supply well and/or water service supplied by the Auburn Water District for the past several years. As of last week, there is currently no written agreement in the Auburn Water District and no DEP-approved public water supply well, which would, which would require a redundant well. In addition, the Town of Auburn Sewer Division has retained the services of an engineering consultant with funds provided by Eastland Partners to evaluate the feasibility of accommodating the additional sewer flow as a result of this development. The consultant will also be reviewing what upgrades, if any, would be necessary for the sewer infrastructure to be able to accept the additional flow. This study is ongoing and should be complete in the next few weeks. If you have any questions, please contact Joanna Paquin, Assistant DPW Director, or myself, William Coyle.
Excellent. Thank you very much for reading that out, Caleb, I appreciate it. So, um, obviously, in a future meeting, within the next month or two, we'll be discussing the outcome of, uh, agreements with the water department and, um, any type of, any, any sewers or any other issues that will be coming up with that. Uh, also, just keep in mind, the water department is a separate entity, not related to the town, so they act, acting independently, just for the record. Um, so otherwise, do we have anything else we need to add to this one, then?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve O'Connell. I'd like to just comment for the record.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Uh, so we have been working with the Auburn Water District, uh, we're, we're following their permitting of their water connection to Worcester very closely. We're providing support where necessary and, uh, we are, yes, there are no formal agreements, but there are significant ongoing and regular discussions with them. Um, we think that we have options for water, we're, we're weighing those options and we are working with the Auburn Water District. Um, prior meetings and discussions with Jeff Mitchell of the, uh, Auburn DPW and the sewer superintendent indicated that there was adequate sewer capacity for this project. The study that is ongoing will include the flows from this project, but also, uh, some additional flows that the Town of Oxford is looking to send, uh, into Auburn. Uh, so, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a little bit complicated, um, but I wanna let you know and assure the rest of the board that we're on top of these things. Uh, any sort of condition would be standard. Obviously, we have to have utilities to serve the project, but a comprehensive permit with those sorts of conditions is pretty difficult. Um, we would not obtain building permits without utilities available to serve the project.
Sure. I appreciate the, thank you very much. Okay, so with that being said, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion.
Through the chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Um, unless the board is looking to take action, I think the motion would be to continue.
Yes, sir. I, thank you very much for that. I appreciate that because, again, as we have mentioned earlier, these meeting, uh, these, um, hearings technically stay open. So do I have a motion on the board to continue to the August twentieth DVA meeting?
Mr. Chairman, so I'll, I'll, um, retract my original motion to continue, excuse me, to, uh, close and I'll make the motion to continue as stated.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Do I have a second?
Yeah, Rich Cuddy, second?
Alright, second for Mr. Cuddy. Um, Ms. Bush, how do you vote?
Uh, I agree.
Thank you. Mr. Jones? And I vote affirmative. Gentlemen, we'll see you next month in the August meeting. Good luck. Um, and I'm sure, always, always, if you have any questions or concerns, you can certainly reach out to Caleb.
Great, thank, uh, thank you and hey, Chairman. Great, thanks. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. See you next meeting.
Okay, so, um, we'll move on. I was notified very briefly before the meeting that we had some, um, typographical errors that we're going into the April minutes, so we're gonna not vote on those right now, we're gonna move on to the next one for that one. And then we have the next meeting is August 20th, 2020. Presumably, we will still be doing so remotely until the governor lifts his orders. Um, so with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion to adjourn from Mr. Maron, do I have a second?
Okay, Rich Cuffey.
Alright, all in favor? Ayes. Congratulations, thank you very much, stay safe.
Aye.